Good evening. Welcome to the February 10th, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I want to start off with a moment of silence for two students that have gone too soon. J.M. Robinson student Michael Stevens, who is a senior, and Wesley Bratton, who is a sophomore. So if you would join me in about 30 seconds of silence. And our heart goes out to those families. We're going to move on to our opening ceremony for the presentation of colors Central Cabarrus High School.
Tonight's colors are being presented by the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC, and their personnel includes Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Dean Brendel, Cadet Second Lieutenant Matthew Brinkley, Cadet Second Lieutenant James Hughes, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Jesse Lantigua.
Please stand.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars through the perilous fight? For the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order. Colors? Post.
We're members of the Harris Road Middle School Sixth Grade Chorus under the direction of Mrs. Rachel Giuliano, who will now read the names of their personnel.
And you may be seated.
Members include Celia A., Malena A., Arjun A., Tonvi A., Jasmine A., Michaela B., Sydney B., Sarah B., Luna B., Drew C., Suprasha D., Jemaya E., Sophia E., Lila E., Mary F., Riley F., Lily G., Christian H., Julia H., Connor H., Talia H., Deja J., Amanda K., Emma K., Banu K., Sydney L., Abigail L., Sahithi M., Sanvi M., Alyssa M., Heaven M., Caitlin M., Ved M., Jordan M., Lorelei M., Tatiana N., Riley P., Kylie P., Keenan R., Sean R., Rashmi R., Angini S., Kyra S., Evan S., Monica S., Sydney S., Julia S., Deanna V., Manis V., Carter W., Hayden Y.
Thank you so much for coming to our board meeting. Board members, we need to set our agenda for the night. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Harrison, second by Ms. Furtenbaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. We have our agenda set. We'll move on to the recognition portion of our meeting. And I have item 5.101, Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We have Superintendent Chris Lauter, Ms. Glenda Jones, and Mr. Tim Vaughn. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I'm excited to fill in for Mrs. Jones this evening and present our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We always want to say thank you to Mr. Vaughn and the Hillbush Ford for their continued support of this program. You're great community partners, and we are just so thankful for you. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Mr. Joshua Crisp. With Mr. Crisp and his family and any of his school administrators who are here with him tonight, please come forward.
Joshua Crisp is a teacher at Harrisburg Elementary School. He was nominated for this award by a student who wrote, "This teacher deserves special recognition because he is like no other. He explains everything he teaches in a way that is easy for everyone to understand. He helps me when I need extra credit. He makes me excited to learn whenever I enter his classroom. He isn't harsh or strict, but he is still able to keep everyone on task. Since he is very lively and funny, I'm never bored and always focused. He is also very encouraging and supportive because he is willing to use some of his free time to come to educational events that his students are participating in, activities like the spelling bee. He has a hard job because he is the only fifth grade teacher in my school who teaches reading, math, science, and social studies, but he is still able to do everything that he needs to do. I think Mr. Crisp should be Teacher of the Year, but Teacher of the Month is fine for Mr. Crisp, congratulations on your selection as Teacher of the Month. Thank you for being a wonderful teacher and making such an impression on your students with your patience, support, and energetic teaching style. Please allow Dr. Lauter and Mr. Vaughn to present you with your award.[601.01][601.01](Applause). And now allow the board members to congratulate you. Let all the board members congratulate you, too.
Okay, next we have item 5.02, the Impact Through Education Awards. And Ms. Moon's already up there.
Yes.
Do we have our representatives?
I'd like to invite the members from, representatives from Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors, to join me at the front of the room, please. Mr. Michael Kovalchek and Mr. Alex Davidson, if you all are here tonight. Stand right there on that line for me. Thank you. Tonight we'll be presenting Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Bethel Elementary School and J.M. Robinson High School. We want to thank both of these gentlemen for being here this evening. They are representatives, as I said, from Equitable, formerly known as AXA Advisors, and they are the sponsors for this year's Impact Through Education Awards. We appreciate your support. First up this evening is Bethel Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Bethel Administrative Team to come forward, please. Our first honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Laney Campbell. With Laney and her family, please come forward. There you go. Laney Campbell is a fourth grade model student and a great friend at Bethel Elementary. She is really good at building relationships with others and helping those in need. She has a heart of gold. Anytime anyone needs help in the classroom, Laney is one of the first to volunteer. Laney is the kind of student that, the kind of child that every parent wishes for and every, every teacher loves to have in their class. She's always smiling and is capable of brightening the mood in a room. Laney is a leader and a role model for all Bethel Bengals. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award.[791.73][791.73](Applause). Mom and dad and brother can go, too.[810.01][810.01](Laughter). Our next honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Bella Watkins. Would Bella and her family please come forward? Bella Watkins is a great fifth grade student at Bethel Elementary School. She not only excels in her academics, but also in her friendships and compassion for others. Bella befriends every student at Bethel and values others' opinions. She works hard in class, never gives up, and challenges herself to do better always. She has won the science fair three years in a row and has even placed in the regional science fair, landing her a spot in the state competition. Bella also participates in safety patrol, the spelling bee, and the geography bee. When she's not rocking her schoolwork, she participates in dance and her church, where she sings in front of the entire congregation. Bella is an outstanding child and someone others look up to, who they know will always be doing the right thing. Our next Bethel honoree is Mrs. Anna Dobbins. Would Mrs. Dobbins and her family please come forward?
Anna Dobbins is a physical education teacher and a former Bethel Elementary School Teacher of the Year. She is the teacher who knows every single student in the school, his or her strengths, weaknesses, struggles, and triumphs. She talks to her students, listens to them, and offers them guidance and support. She reaches out to others to help them and to share what she knows about her students. Mrs. Dobbins advocates for students' global needs by collaborating with support staff and parents and strives to be a continuous learner. The Bethel staff is honored to work alongside Mrs. Anna Dobbins, and they are better educators because of her example. And our final honoree from Bethel Elementary School this evening is Mrs. Stephanie Biggers. Would Mrs. Biggers and her family please come forward? Mrs. Biggers has served as a school nurse for 15 years and celebrates a total of 40 years in the nursing profession. She is an integral part of the total school's success and serves as a member of the resiliency leadership team and the school's mental health team. Mrs. Biggers works with students, families, and staff to ensure that their global health and wellness are supported and nourished. She puts her heart and soul into all that she does and is a shining star at Bethel Elementary School.
Now, we'll move on to our Impact Through Education Honorrees for J.M. Robinson High School, and I'd like to invite any members of the J.M. Robinson Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from J.M. Robinson is Demi Johnson, and Mr. Hobbs just told me that she was not able to join us this evening, but we would like to still read her bio, and I'll present you with her award to make sure she gets it. Demi Johnson is a natural leader who is vocal in advocating what is best for students at J.M. Robinson High School. She is volleyball team captain as well as a member of student council. She's a conscientious student with a 4.125 GPA. Demi is a dedicated peer helper in the school's Abilities and Possibilities class. She volunteers in the class daily. She's helpful and does not mind doing any tasks she's asked to complete. The teachers are so thankful for her assistance in class each day, and we congratulate Demi Our next honoree from J.M. Robinson High School is Brooke Moore. Would Brooke and her family please come forward? Brooke is a senior at J.M. Robinson High School and ranked 17th in the class of 2020 with a 4.325 GPA. She is a wonderful young lady who does so much with the special needs students at Robinson. She goes above and beyond working with the students as she observes electives with them and helps to make sure that they are integrated into class every day. She monitors and works with behaviors when needed. J.M. Robinson appreciates Brooke's dedication and congratulates her on receiving this Impact Our next Robinson honoree is Mrs. Jenny McCarthy. Would Mrs. McCarthy and her family please come forward? Mrs. McCarthy is the math department chair. She made a vital impact on students at J.M. Robinson High School by leading the Career Cruising Day. This day of events allowed all four grade levels of students to experience academic, college, and career, and workforce potential opportunities by meeting college representatives as well as entrepreneurs and military representatives. J.M. Robinson High School is proud to present Jenny McCarthy with an Impact Through Education Award. And our final honoree this evening from J.M. Robinson High School is Mrs. Deborah Hill. Would Mrs. Hill and her family please come forward? Mrs. Hill is the lead custodian at J.M. Robinson High School. She's dependable and trustworthy. She not only ensures that the school is clean, but she also holds her staff to high expectations. She and her staff work to keep the school clean for students and staff as well as for the community since J.M. Robinson is one of the most used facilities in the district. Thank you, Mrs. Hill, for the impact you make at J.M. Robinson High School.
All right, next we have item 5.03, ITEA. I'll have to explain what that is. Middle School Teacher Excellence Award. And you're filling in for Mel.
Here, I'd just like to introduce her. So tonight, we're going to have Ms. Ritter come up. Ms. Ritter is part of our CTE department, and she serves as our CTE instructional specialist, and she will be presenting the award this evening.
Thank you for having me. CTE is honored to recognize Mr. Zachary Trivet as the NCITEA Award winner this evening. Will Mr. Trivet and the administrators from Mount Pleasant Middle School please come The International Technology and Engineering Educators Association is an international organization that works to promote STEM education around the world. Each year, the North Carolina chapter of the Technology, Engineering, and Design Educators Association recognizes a middle school teacher for excellence in promoting STEM education. Candidates for the Teacher Excellence Award are characterized as providing technology and engineering education instruction that is high-quality, learner-centered, and relevant to a study of technological literacy. The Teacher Excellence Award is one of the highest honors given to technology and engineering education classroom teachers and is presented in recognition of their outstanding contributions to the profession and their students. The award winner is recognized at the state conference each spring and at the national conference every March. This year's winner of the North Carolina ITEA Middle School Teacher Excellence Award
Now, to 5.04, National School Transportation, Specifics, and Procedures delegation. Mr. Brian Schultz.
Good evening, Board Chair Walter, Superintendent Lauter, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight, and it's really my pleasure to recognize our very own Director of Transportation, Mr. Art Whitaker. Art, if you'll come forward.[1684.82][1684.82](Applause). So, Mr. Whitaker was formally requested to serve on the delegation representing North Carolina to revise and update the National School Transportation Specifications and Procedures. This document serves as a basis for the separate states to establish specifications, rules, and/or regulations for school transportation within those states. Nationally, it is a document of great importance and is a symbol of the school transportation industry's commitment to student safety. The National Congress on School Transportation convenes every five years to review and update this document. Each state is allowed a delegation of up to seven people, and each state is permitted a single vote on amendments to the document in a proceeding governed by parliamentally... (laughing).[1740.48] Each year, the North Carolina School Public Relations Association honors excellence in school communications and public relations with its Blue Ribbon Award Ceremony. Our Communications and Public Information Team, Ronnie Boone, Melanie Gonzalez, and Mike Martin, received nine awards at this year's ceremony. Six gold, two silver, and one bronze. Their awards were for work in a variety of categories, including digital media, graphic design, electronic media, photography, and special events and programs. Our communication team has earned a total of 68 Blue Ribbon Awards over the years. We congratulate them on their awards.
All right, item 5.06, we get to recognize one of our own. The NCSBA Certificate of Advanced Achievement. Mr. Shoemaker, did you want to present that to Mr. Harris? So that has to do with training hours, right? And David has completed between 201 and 300 training hours. That's pretty darn impressive. Congratulations to Mr. Harrison. our SRO today, Officer JR Gatling from Royal Oaks Elementary School. And I would appreciate him being here if he's still in the room. I guess he's not. He's in the back?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for all you do for... Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. 6.01, we have two sets of minutes from January 6, 2020, the work session, and the January 13, 2020 business meeting. Any... You've all had time to review those. Any comments or changes? And if we're hearing none, we need a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Move to adopt.
And a second then.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Harrison, a second by Mr. Shoemaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. Hearing none, motion passes. So we'll move on to board chair and superintendent comments. I'm going to share the time today with two of my colleagues, but I'll start with... Just wanted to let everybody know about, we're a big supporter of arts in our county, and there are some real cool performances that are upcoming. I just wanted to let you all know about those. The All County Band will be performing this Saturday, February 15, at 1:00 at the AL Brown High School, their Performing Arts Center. And I'm told it's the... They'll have a piece there that they're learning for the first time. It's a world premiere, Variations on Celtic Time Tune by Michael Orr. So that's pretty cool, and that's open to the public, and it is free. The All County Elementary School Chorus, and you've got to at least hopefully have seen that once this year. It's going to be Saturday, February 22, at 1:00 p.m., and that'll be at Cox Mill High School Auditorium. And our middle school chorus, they will be performing, again open to the public, at Winkler Middle School Auditorium on Friday, February 28, at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. So if you want to learn more about any of these events, please go to the Fine Arts Focus button on the CCS main webpage, and it'll show you all the information that you need for those performances and other fine arts performances that are happening this spring. I wanted to delegate some of my time to Ms. Carpenter. She had an announcement for us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Salvation Army Women's Auxiliary will be holding our Soup Erble. Not super, but soup. And we will be serving soup, crackers, dessert, and beverages, and the money will be helping provide for all our services, and one of them being our scholarships, which this year we'll be having three scholarships for our graduating seniors. And this will be on February the 18th, from 11 to 2, at Forest Hills United Methodist Church located at 265 Union Street North. And you can purchase tickets there. They will have takeout orders. We will have a bake sale and also sell items. If there is bad weather like snow or ice, which I'm hoping there won't be, I've heard good weather's in the forecast, it would be a makeup day, February the 25th. We have great soups which are donated by all our local restaurants, so we always have a good selection. But again, come join us. Tickets are $10, and again, all the funds 100% go towards all our services, which do help for all our services that Salvation Army provides. So again, the main thing, like I say, I want to keep our scholarships and increase that. So thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Harrison also had an announcement for us?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Friday, I believe Friday is the 15th of February, is the deadline to purchase tickets for the first annual, and likely to be repeated pretty often because it's going to be quite successful, Cabarrus County Education Foundation Game of Games Night. And the purpose of the foundation is to generate funds which do not come from any other source to provide funding for classroom supplies to teachers and many grants and a variety of other teacher-focused needs that directly impact the learning of children. The event is on February the 29th, but again, Friday this week is the deadline to purchase tickets. I have some, and if you would like to get them, please do. I'd be honored to have your presence there. This will be at the Cabarrus County... I'm sorry, at the, yes, Cabarrus County Country Club, and it's going to be quite an affair. Please join us if you can, and in any other way that you'd like, especially through corporate donations or company sponsorships. Please help the foundation make an impact in the classrooms. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And if you are unable to attend that event, there's another event going on same evening at Mount Pleasant Middle School Auditorium that I'll be participating in. It's a play that benefits the Mount Pleasant friends of the Mount Pleasant Library. So at 7:00, same night, on February 9, at the Mount Pleasant Middle School. We'll be having a good time raising some funds for the library there. A couple things for my fellow board members. We do have some thank you cards from, I guess it was Harrisburg Kids Plus Program, and I'm going to send down to you so you can read those. They've done some artwork for us, and pass that this way. And then going this way, we have the annual report for the NC Education Lottery going that way. And then the last thing, I just wanted to wish our teacher liaison, Kate Highsmith, a happy birthday this week. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin by thanking our staff, students, and parents for their great work and cooperation during last week's inclement weather. Our students and staff regularly practice for situations such as this, and we hope we never have to use them. But on Thursday, we had to put a lot of practice into action. I know Thursday was a hard day for everyone, but I'm very thankful that we all were safe and very proud of how our schools handled that situation. Last week, we celebrated National School Counseling Week. Cabarrus County Schools has an excellent team of professional counselors who work directly with students to help them expand their academic and life skills. They often are the silent heroes in our school buildings and are actively engaged in helping students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents. They focus on positive ways to enhance students' lives in and out of school now and in the future. This week, we're celebrating School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, which also is known as Love the Bus Week. Cabarrus County Schools bus drivers are among the best in the business who safely transport thousands of students to and from school each day. Bus drivers often set the tone for a student's day when they welcome them onto the bus. February is also Black History Month. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of African-Americans that have made a difference in our nation and our world. We're also celebrating Career and Technical Education Month, as our Career and Technical Education Director Rusty Parker shared last week. Cabarrus County Schools offers students a variety of courses and pathways designed to help them explore interests and pursue career options. We also have a dedicated staff of teachers, coordinators, and academy leaders who work with our community to bring career opportunities to our students. Applications are now available for the 2020-2021 school year for the North Carolina Pre-K Program in Cabarrus County. If you have a child who will be four years old, owner before August 30th, 31st of 2020, and you meet other eligibility requirements, you can apply for the program. Visit the Cabarrus Partnership for Children's website at www.cabarruspartnership.org to learn more and how to apply. It is almost time for the 2020 Census. Beginning in mid-March, the U.S. Census Bureau will invite households across the country to participate in the 2020 Census. The Census count affects the allocation of funding for our community's public resources such as roads, schools, and hospitals. The count also affects our voice in government as it determines how congressional seats are determined, so it's important that the count is accurate. To learn more about the importance of the 2020 Census and what to expect, visit www.20.20census.gov. Cabarrus County Schools will host a job fair next Monday, February 17, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Auxiliary Services Center, which is at 111 Union Cemetery Road in Concord. Full and part-time positions are available for cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, and childcare workers. Visit our direct website for details. I also want to say congratulations to Weddington Hills Elementary School for receiving the National Magnet School of Distinction Honor for the fourth consecutive year. This award is given by Magnet Schools of America, the National Association for Magnet and Theme-Based Schools. Congratulations to Principal Dolan and her staff, which also includes our teacher liaison and Teacher of the Year Kate Highsmith. And finally, this will be Ms. Reimer's last school board meeting. We will give her a proper send-off before the end of the month, but we want to make sure that we wish her congratulations on her retirement. I first met Ms. Reimer when she began as Assistant Principal at Concord High, and then she served as Principal at Northwest High and Central Cabarrus High. I saw firsthand the tremendous job that she did and admired her as truly, as a truly great leader. She then used all of her talents to serve as an Assistant Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendent. Honestly, I do not know how to thank her for everything she has done for our school system and for me as the superintendent. She has been an integral part of everything that has happened over the past five years. I have relied on her judgment and her leadership nearly every day that I have served as the superintendent. I have never worked as closely with or relied on anyone as much as I have heard these past five years. Cabarrus County Schools is a better organization because she worked here. Ms. Reimer, we wish you the best retirement that anyone has ever had. You have certainly earned it. Thank you, and we will miss you very much.
I think the whole board feels the same way. All right, we'll regroup and move on to our guest speaker section of the meeting, and bear with me as I read these policy and guidelines here. In accordance with board policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign-ups will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins. Speakers must sign up with the board clerk no later than the start of the... Start time of the regular scheduled monthly business meeting, and we have seven folks that have done so. Speakers must complete the contact card, including name, group name, address, phone number, and list of the general education-related topic of their presentation for the board minutes. During the public comment period, the board chair will recognize speakers in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers are not... Will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate a portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. In an excuse... Trying to regroup here. At any time, the board may establish additional procedures to ensure that the public comment sessions proceed in efficient and orderly manner. Generally, personnel, confidential, or specific school-level matters will be handled in accordance with the board's grievance policy and/or the appeal rights afforded under the North Carolina general statutes and are not the proper subject of public comment portion of a board meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter, except in a case of emergencies received during presentations or not acted upon at the time it is received. And it will take unanimous action of the board members present to take action when a presentation considered to be of an unusual, extreme nature at the time it is presented. Sorry for all that, but having said all that, we have the rules in place, and we will have our first speaker, who will have three minutes, and I'm going to call Kelly Becker. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So here, you'll be speaking on option two.
Yes, thank you for having me again. Hopefully, you guys all received the over 25 reasons to vote yes for option two. I brought a hard copy here Friday, hoping to catch one of you guys, but I didn't realize you don't have offices here. Anyway, so I just want to reiterate the importance of voting yes tonight on option two. We know Cox Mill will be over capacity next year. It'll be unsafe, so we need an action to resolve that. As Board Member Blackwell stated, she asked Ms. Reimer to come up with a logical solution to the problem, and she did that. Those were your words, you know, last week. The option addresses concerns of Board Member Furtinbaugh and Harrison about not being able to predict the future and leaving space at all the schools. It addresses Board Member Grimsley, your concern about left turns. It addresses Board Member Carpenter, your concern about being transparent and having an option that the community is seeing and had feedback on. So option two, right? It gives us the health, safety, and quality of education of our students. It considers school capacity, balancing school utilization, allowing for growth at all schools, minimizing student impact, providing safe and efficient busing, and keeping with close proximity to schools. So I ask you to vote yes tonight to option two, to help your community, the kids, the parents, by giving us a decision, letting us have a decision tonight and letting us move forward. So that's all. If you have any questions about the document that I gave you, the numbers came from the January meeting that you guys had, and a lot of the comments came from things that I heard, either concerns or pros and cons, that you all expressed from option two. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and taking the time to do that for us.
Hopefully, it makes it easy.
Our second speaker tonight is Eileen... Or... Excuse me. Orhula, is that?
Orwella.
Orwella, I'm sorry with the names. You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you're also speaking on option two.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Orwella, and I am here tonight, once again, in support of option two for realignment. After careful review of the maps, planning blocks, and enrollment numbers, I do believe this is the most logical option to relieve the overcrowding at Cox Mill Elementary. I know there is some concern that this is not a long-term solution. However, based on the enormous plans and approved growth surrounding Odell and Boger, we cannot cripple those schools with Cox Mill's excess student population, or they will be busting at the seams as well in a very short time. The areas immediately surrounding Cox Mill are mostly developed already, with only a small number of new developments on the horizon, some of which have not yet even been approved. Due to the natural aging of the established planning blocks immediately surrounding Cox Mill, it is safe to say that enrollment will decline, leaving room for the additional growth. Option two moves roughly 190 students from Cox Mill to Odell and moves roughly 50 students from Odell to Boger. This should be an acceptable balance based on current enrollment numbers and... I heard, either concerns or pros and cons, that you all expressed from Option 2. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and taking the time to do that for us.
Hopefully, it makes it easy.
Our second speaker tonight is Eileen, or, excuse me, Arhula, is that?
Orwella.
Orwella, I'm sorry with the names. You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you're also speaking on Option 2.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Orwella, and I am here tonight, once again, in support of Option 2 for realignment. After careful review of the maps, planning blocks, and enrollment numbers, I do believe this is the most logical option to relieve the overcrowding at Cox Mill Elementary. I know there is some concern that this is not a long-term solution. However, based on the enormous plans and approved growth surrounding Odell and Boger, we cannot cripple those schools with Cox Mill's excess student population, or they will be busting at the seams as well in a very short time. The areas immediately surrounding Cox Mill are mostly developed already, with only a small number of new developments on the horizon, some of which have not yet even been approved. Due to the natural aging of the established planning blocks immediately surrounding Cox Mill, it is safe to say that enrollment will decline, leaving room for the additional growth. Option 2 moves roughly 190 students from Cox Mill to Odell and moves roughly 50 students from Odell to Boger. This should be an acceptable balance, based on current enrollment numbers and estimated projections for the next few years. It is nearly impossible to project exact and accurate enrollment numbers for the next two to three years for all three schools, given the tremendous growth planned in that section of the county. These facts, in addition to the new middle school scheduled to open in 2022, will undoubtedly require realignment of feeder schools and is inevitably going to put us back here in a couple of years. While I appreciate the desire to come up with a solution that will work for years to come, I think we all know that's not possible, given the fast track of tremendous growth in that area. Option 2 provides overcrowding relief, as well as natural boundaries, which includes neighborhoods that share an island with Cox Mill, and there will be no primary roads or major intersections that would require crossing. In addition, there is ease and safety for bus transportation. Specifically, Planning Block 77 and 465 are able to utilize all right-hand turns to and from the school. We also know that there is a Greenway Project, which will begin in the next couple of years, that will connect these neighborhoods to the school directly. It is a logical choice to keep those planning blocks zoned at Cox Mill, as students will be able to walk to school if they so desire without having to access any public roads. Given this information, I am strongly in favor of and fully support Option 2. Thank you very much for your time tonight and the countless hours of tedious data review. I realize how grueling these decisions are and appreciate all of the hard work that you have put into this difficult process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker is Jean Weinish. And your subject is also Cox Mill Elementary Realignment.
Sort of, slightly, a slight variance I'll give to you on that one, which is, I do think 2 is flawed. I don't know it'll cover us even for a year, but I'm not going to talk about that. I am a Mandarin parent. There are quite a few Mandarin parents impacted, and so the topic I wanted to bring to you tonight is one that we haven't spoke of yet. Since it looks like 2 is a foregone conclusion, I wanted to make sure that I spoke for a moment about the process. So the process, at the end of last year, switched, and it said, hey, you don't have to reassign your kid, because you're in the, you're in the school and you're in the program. So there are processes that we're going to need to make sure we ask you to put in place a formal way to make sure that our children are maintained and seated, because when you zone us out, we are now, we didn't ask to be school choice, because we didn't have to. We were already in the program, and they said we didn't need to. So that's the first thing I'd like to ask, to make sure that the board considers, finds an option for all of the families who have vested time and energy in that program. It's a great program, and we're, it takes a fair amount of work to put your children through it. Not that the school doesn't do a lot, but it definitely takes work outside of that. The second I would like to ask is, with all of the rezoning over the past several years, you have pulled a lot of children out of that program, whose parents hadn't been prepared to drive them, who now also would be facing the disadvantage of not having the educational opportunity of being on a bus, developing that socialization and other things, and the connection with other children. And so I would like you also to consider a study that would, look at that. I believe we actually have just coming down Poplar Tent and around in a circle, you'd have enough children to fill the bus. And I was very excited that today's recipient of an award was Art, and Art gave me his card and said he would happily work with me to look at my proposal, so I would gladly volunteer to partner with Art and others to come up with a proposal that would analyze the option for busing our children. He also said, I should probably just ask you outright, he goes, you know, looking at that very brief scenario, they might even be planning to bus the children. So if you're planning to continue to bus the children who get rezoned out, I'd be happy. Right now, to me, it looks like a shuffling of a deck of cards. It's the same neighborhoods, they're either going to go to Odell, or they're going to go to Cox Mill. And through all of these discussions, we've heard that the distance between the two is negligible. So you'd not have additional driving, you'd not have additional students if you looked at a addendum, a grandfather clause, to bus the children who have been zoned out, both in this zoning and frankly, in future zonings, because like I said, I don't think you're done. And I won't project that. I know you guys have a horrible job. It's not fun, there's no great answers, there's no obvious solution. So I would only ask you to consider looking at, one, making sure that all our children are kept in the program if they want to, and that we're not burdened with unnecessary stress and running around trying to make sure that they remain, once you make your decision. And the second is to look at busing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Soma Nag, who's also speaking on the Cox Mill Realignment.
Good evening, board members. I'm Soma Nag. I'm, I'm here to thank you for your time, for giving me time last week to share my views and to share my views this week as well. I promise to keep this brief. I'm not going to repeat any of the points that I made last week about, you know, the criteria that is best supported by Option 2. I think we've talked about that enough. What I'm here to highlight is a couple of other key points that I heard mentioned at the board meeting, in fact, last week. One is that there is no perfect long-term solution to any, no realignment option is going to be a perfect long-term solution. A lot of factors could change, including the economy, which could impact, you know, the developments that have been approved, that have been planned but not yet approved, or have been approved but not yet built. A lot could change between now and that timeline. The second point that I wanted to highlight is that, no matter which option we choose, we'll be here back again in two years, doing this realignment process, because of the fact that we'll be building a new middle school, and all the elementary schools that feed into that middle school will have to be realigned, no matter what. So given the logic of these two points, I wanted to highlight that currently, the least, the most efficient or least disruptive option, if I may say so, is Option 2, which I'm in support of. And I urge you, as board members, to take into consideration the logic of these points, and, you know, hopefully, whatever decision you make will be done in a very transparent and logical manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Lettingham, and again, it's also the subject of Option 2 at Cox Mill.
Hello, my name is John Lettingham, and there's a theme that seems to be going on. Many of you remember, I was here last week, asking that Planning Block 83 be removed from Option 2. I understand that last week, you guys, there was an Option 2A that was floating around to remind you guys that we are the closest neighborhood, we, our neighborhood actually touches Cox Mill High School, which is across the street from Cox Mill Elementary School. We are 1.3 miles from our furthest house in our neighborhood to the door of Cox Mill Elementary. We would have to pass by Cox Mill Road in order to get to Odell. Odell is the primary, the secondary is 2.7 miles away, primary is 3.9 miles away, and we pass International School, which stops traffic on Poplar Tent to and from to let school out. So our afternoon commute could possibly be 25 minutes or longer, based on traffic. After the meeting, several of you had mentioned that it was a possibility that, because we are seven students now, we're five students next year, that you would entertain or have no issue removing Beach Bluff. I'd also like to point that it's my understanding that Brian Schultz, Assistant Superintendent of Auxiliary Services, mentioned in his email to the board last week, and I quote, "If Planning Block 83 is redistricted to Odell, transportation to Odell is not an issue, but much more simple to route to Cox Mill Elementary School." So I would like to, to say that I have no idea whether, how these things work and whether my comments are important, but as a parent, local citizen, I felt the urge to make another voice heard on the common sense approach to keep our seven students at Cox Mill Elementary. Again, our neighborhood was built in the 70s and 80s, there's two or three empty lots that will not perk, so there's no foreseeable growth in our neighborhood. Also, I would like to make the comment that I know there was some communication about YouTube channel and that there were other options out there, and I might not know what I'm doing, but I tried to look through, and I couldn't see any of the, what those other options were. I know that there were some options, an Option 5 that was put on the table. My only concern with the support of Option 2 is the fact that you guys are actually pushing additional traffic through Highland Creek Neighborhood in order to accommodate the reassignment, because you'll now be pushing, instead of Poplar Tent and the major thoroughfares, you're pushing traffic through Cox Mill, or Highland Creek Neighborhood. So thank you again.
Thank you for your time. Next speaker is Gary Eldredge, and your subject is also Cox Mill Realignment.
Members of the board, thank you. I will not reiterate logic tonight. I will not reiterate everything you've already heard. What I will tell you tonight is that this is more than numbers. I come to you not as one person voting for Option 2, but voting for a community. We are in need of healing, and we ask you to make a decision tonight, and then move forward with the options to correct that growth moving forward. I, to give you an understanding of the concept of what I come from in this instance, is that my wife and I both come from a small area in Ohio, and we strive to find a community that, where we both went from kindergarten through 12, in the same school system. Although opposite, but still in that same system, we had that community feel. We had that sense of belonging, we had that sense of pride. What we ask tonight is that you give us those options again. We chose our subdivision, we chose our area, we chose Cox Mill to be a part of that community. Our children, like many of the others, Beach Bluff, Highland Creek, Winding Walk, Skybrook, they are community, they are, together, they are family. So this is more than just numbers and bus routes. This is about bringing sense to a little bit of chaos, and we ask that you bring that to an end. I am a proponent, I am a proponent of Option 2. Maybe I'm biased, but I still think it's a logical choice. But the point I'm asking to make is that I have a eight-year-old son who is in Cox Mill, who has been diagnosed, you know, he was a 27-week infant when he was born. Due to some of the, he is thriving, he, we are blessed beyond our original, beyond all means, but he, part of his development is due to change. He requires a little bit of consistency and uniformity. He thrives in a school zone where teachers took the time to let him be him and grow, where I don't feel they would have in other places. They gave him the opportunity to mature into himself, and now he is, where he was falling behind just 18 months ago, is now thriving in his class. So my, my ask to you is that this is more than numbers. This is more than bus routes, and this is more than traffic patterns. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And our last speaker tonight is Rahil R. Patel, and speaking about Option 2.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here, and thank you for your time today. I'm here to speak in support of Option 2. Yeah, my friends and colleagues have made plenty of salient points as to why Option 2 is a rational way forward here, so I'm not going to go over all the same points. I do want to touch on one thing that's very important to me personally, is the safety and well-being of the children that go to Cox Mill. So I'm going to touch on two things. The transportation routes to and from the neighborhoods within Option 2 allow for a far safer option for both bus riders as well as bus drivers, and this promotes the overall health and well-being of the children and the people who work in the school system. Furthermore, Option 2 also maintains contiguous zones, so if you think about it, if you look at the map, all the neighborhoods within Option 2 are within the main road boundaries of Poplar Tent and Harris Road, and that limits, you know, buses crossing main roads. Also, with the development of the Clark Creek Greenway, once that's developed, you'll be able to have children walk to school. Cox Mill Elementary is going to be about a mile from, at most, from most of the neighborhoods within that area. So again, that, that option promotes health and well-being when you have children walking to the neighborhood schools. Where does that happen right now in our county, right? So I implore you to please look at Option 2 seriously and support that. Thank you again for your hard work and your time today.
Thank you for your time. Well, that concludes our guest speaker section of our meeting tonight. So we will move on to our next item, which is the approval of the consent agenda, which we discussed at length last week. So, board members, any further comment on our consent agenda? If not, I'd like a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a move by Ms. Furtinbaugh, a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will move on to our, the next item, which is 10.02, the Approval of Realignment for Cox Mill Elementary School. And again, the reason we're here is because we have an overcrowding situation at Cox Mill, where currently, we had 1,161 students, and a capacity at that school of 1,160 students with anticipated growth that would move that school for over 1,200 for next year. Well, there is no space for those additional students, there's no room for teachers, there's no classrooms, so we need to make, do something. We have a recommendation from the staff that we got a couple weeks ago. We had a public hearing where we had some, quite a bit of input, we had additional input tonight. So we will be voting on either Option 2 or something less than Option 2, which could be the 2A that we had, was mentioned earlier. If Option 2 or 2A is not, not, does not pass, then we'll have to determine exactly where we, what our next steps are. I do want to thank every, all the staff folks that have put all the time in and answering our board's questions. The board has spent significant time on, on this, this issue. We have a board member that has come up with additional options that may be longer-term solutions, and for, because of that time, I'd like to give her some time to go over what that option is and why, in her opinion, it would be better than Option 2. So can I pass it on to Ms. Grimsley?
Thank you.
And we did have some maps for that, for that option that are on the screen now, so...
Brian, who's going to take care of pulling those up?
Yeah, so Option 11.
Okay, great. So, you know, first of all, I want to say, there's a lot of work and time that goes into this, and this is not giving anybody a hard time, or, you know, with Option 2. It's, it's a huge decision to make, and a lot of time and, you know, effort is put into it on both sides. The issue that I had is, last year, when we were addressing this, the, and, Lynn, would you mind coming, because I think you're going to probably have to answer some of these questions more so than anybody, do you mind coming up? I hate to put you on the spot on your last meeting, but you probably know this number's hard, I'm pretty sure. So, out of this last, last year with the Cropper Study, I'm correct in saying that it was going to ask for 123 students to be moved out of the Cropper Study, because I printed that off today, and it looks like it took it to 919 students that would wind up being at Cox Mill. Correct?
Okay, so I can't speak to those specific numbers. What I can tell you is that was a point in time, and those are projections, just as we're doing a point in time now, and we're giving you projections. There was no crystal ball in it, it was done two years ago. So one other thing that I'll say while I'm standing here is that it's been said many times that Cropper Studies numbers were wrong or incorrect and all that, and that's completely not true. His numbers are exactly correct at that point in time, and if we went back to that two years ago, we would have the exact same numbers that we do today. There is no way to know, Mr. Schumaker and some of you board members have...
Brian, who's going to take care of pulling those up? Okay, great. So, you know, first of all, I want to say, there's a lot of work and time that goes into this. And this is not giving anybody a hard time or, you know, with option two. It's a huge decision to make and a lot of time and, you know, effort is put into it on both sides. The issue that I had is, last year when we were addressing this, the, and Lynn, would you mind coming, because I think you're going to probably have to answer some of these questions more so than anybody. Do you mind coming up? I hate to put you on the spot on your last meeting, but you probably know this number's hard, I'm pretty sure. So, out of this last year with the Cropper Study, I'm correct in saying that it was going to ask for 123 students to be moved out of the Cropper Study? Because I printed that off today and it looks like it took it to 919 students that would wind up being at Cox Mill. Correct?
Okay, so, I can't speak to those specific numbers. What I can tell you is that was a point in time and those are projections, just as we're doing a point in time now and we're giving you projections. There was no crystal ball in it, it was done two years ago. So, one other thing that I'll say while I'm standing here is that it's been said many times that Cropper Studies' numbers were wrong or incorrect and all that, and that's completely not true. His numbers are exactly correct at that point in time. And if we went back to that two years ago, we would have the exact same numbers that we do today. There is no way to know, Mr. Shoemaker and some of you board members have mentioned the amount of growth that we've had in the Cox Mill area. It was unprecedented and no way to predict that. With many assumptions that our demographers and people have to make, that's the way it is. But, to your point, I can't tell you exactly the number. But, it was a projection at that time based on the number of students that were currently enrolled and then the amount of growth that we expected in the area.
Okay, so, let's just say Cropper Studies was correct. And we were at, the one that I printed off says it was going to be at 919 with moving 123. So, if we had have moved 123 and now we're being told this year we needed to move at least around 200, we would have had some issues. And I get it that it may have bought us a year.
Yeah, so, I think the math is interesting there. When you say 123, we're not, I'm not worried as much about the number as I am the areas that we were going to move. And the areas we were going to move grew larger than that number. So, when you say 123 would have been moved, what we were moving is areas that grew larger. So, we would have been closer to 200. And you can see that now as we do the numbers of current kids sitting in those seats. So, had you moved those areas last year, you would have moved enough kids to make, possibly for the two years that we're looking at, to get to realignment with the middle school.
So, with that being said, when we move the amount that, in option two, when we move that now, we're moving approximately 180, it looks like.
Again, that's because you have a certain number of fifth graders leaving and a certain number of kindergartners coming in, and that's a projection. You also have, we've heard from Mandarin parents tonight that'll be involved. And I think both staff and the board will have recommendations around being able to, you know, to support those families that are in that program. But, that's what you're dealing with again, is projections. Maybe a larger fifth grade class going out and a smaller kindergarten class coming in. You have class size in there that really impacts this a lot more than I think we realized last year, so.
Right, so, that would be my point. So, since we did have a larger impact than what we anticipated with the projections and the actual enrollment that come in, that's my concern moving forward. You know, we have, if we're looking at doing what we're doing now, which is greater than what we were going to do last year, if we're still off, we're not moving that many more kids with option two than we would have been.
So, you're going into a year where your class size is dropping again. And then, next year, when you meet that and we move the kids, then we have space for those teachers, we're there. And then, with the projection that we have right now going forward, if we're using what our areas in Cox Mill geographic zone are currently yielding, then staff's projection is that, yes, we'll be crowded, but we can open the school. Where you're sitting right now, you cannot. Once again, I would say my professional opinion and working with this for the last however long, is that in two years, no matter what you do today, you're going to have to look at realignment with elementary schools again anyway. So, if you can get there, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so, with that being said, my issue is, even though we're moving those 200 kids, the build-out in the areas that are going to be built out right around Cox Mill Elementary School, which is Allen Mills, there's another 33, I mean, what I pulled up over the weekend, there's quite a few. So, that's my issue. We are going to have to do it in two years. So, to me, and if you, Brian, can you, whomever's doing that, can you pull up and show like the numbers for option five and actually show the, okay. So, if we, with option two, Cox Mill would have been, will be, if it passes tonight, around 10:40 with option two. With option five, Cox Mill will be at 8:79.
Could you explain what areas that had?
Yep, so, it's moving from Cox Mill to WR Odell, planning blocks. Can y'all pull that back up so I can read those? You had it on there, right? Yeah, there we go, yes. No, you're good right there. No, that's option 2A. Okay, well, let's just go over 2A, that'll be great. Let's start there. So, 2A, actually, I'd rather go to 2, if we can do 2, because 2A has not, didn't have a public hearing. That was decided after the fact.
As we discussed previously, you can remove any section out of a plan. It's still considered to have been part of the public hearing. So, we can remove Beach Bluff.
We can, but what I'm saying is, the numbers that were advertised out is only 2, option 2. Okay, so, let's go back to option 2.
So, Dane has 2A available. Stop right there, Dane. So, if you'll look at, so, 2 included Planning Block 83, and you'll see that just to the, if you.
And it was 187 is what was listed.
Right, okay. So, you just in 2A, you pulled.
Pulled Planning Block 83 with seven students, and that's the Beach Bluff neighborhood that we heard about previously.
And you know, there's really not enough difference with between 2 and 2A, so I'm okay with that, just for reference points. So, Cox Mill, with just say 2, 2A, Cox Mill's sitting at 10:47 after the redistricting. Odell Primary, 8:24. Odell Elementary, 9:20. Boger Elementary, 6:91. You don't have to, if you don't want to.
I just want to say that those are, remember, those are projections and those do include growth, okay?
Well, that's all we're all working off of, so I get that, yeah. Right, so, keeping in mind that with Cox Mill Elementary School, the capacity, the school capacity there without the mobiles is 920. With the mobiles is 1,160. So, that's where I had the really big issue. With that being at 1,047 after the realignment, we're already in a really critical area there to me. And I'm just going to walk through this and then you can comment. So, we're not getting as far as we would really need to be with the build-outs that are coming in. You know, I've seen that, those numbers, those numbers are going to come in. And I worry that they're going to come in quicker than we even think that they are, that we're going to go this year to next year, like we did from last year to this year, and say it's going to be even worse. So, that's all I wanted to do, was to modify that to make those a little bit better. So, let's go to 5. So, option number 5. Can you do just 5? Not, yeah, there we go, okay. So, Cox Mill to WR Odell, moving Planning Blocks 69, 70, 71, 72, 76, 77, 465 and 468. And basically, what that means is, instead of just moving the planning blocks in 2 with the Skybrook and those surrounding planning blocks of the northern part of that map in that district, was taking that and including North Chase and Winding Walk for those that don't know exactly what the numbers are. So, it's just adding 2, 2, Winding Walk and North Chase, which would make Cox Mill Elementary School after the alignment 879. It would make Odell Primary 803, no, I'm sorry, yeah, Odell Primary 803, Odell Elementary 919 and Boger Elementary 881. Moving from Odell to Charlesy Boger would be Planning Blocks 29, 37, 38, 39, 41, 42, 43, 47, 50, 51, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57 and 58. And the reason why I thought that was so important is because you can see, after we do that movement, it puts all the schools around the 800s, which to me is numbers that we can live with in the next couple of years. I don't care what we don't know about growth or projections or build-outs or any of that other stuff. Those numbers, to me, speak to themselves. And that, to me, Odell has the most build-out possibility than any of these areas around there. So, it's concerning to me that we're going to do what we're going to do with option 2 for Cox Mill, but we're just moving that and shifting that problem up to Odell, possibly. And Boger sits over there with the ability of putting almost 300 students in there. So, I'm not, I don't understand why now, and here's my other thought. We're going to come back here in a year or two and have to move Winding Walk, because that's going to be the next logical subdivision to move, because there won't be anything else to do but to add that. So, I don't really understand why we wouldn't look at doing that now to give us a longer-term solution, get these families situated and take care of that. So, let's go down to 5A. So, there was a compromise because there was some issue about, I guess while I was off the board, there was some movement of one of the subdivisions, the farms, that had been moved from Boger to Odell, and they felt like that was an issue. But, what I was, after I went back and looked at that, that didn't, that took place four or five years ago. So, in actuality, those students have aged out. So, they are either in middle school or high school. So, I don't think that's as big of an issue as we thought that would be. But, 5A, taking that in consideration, does, from Cox Mill to WR Odell, only do 70, 71, 76, 77 and 465. That makes Cox Mill at 1,001, still a number, it's 40 to 50 to 60 students less than option number 2. It puts Odell Primary at 7:42, Odell Elementary at 8:58 and Boger at 8:81. And it still, to me, gives us enough breathing room in those other schools to have some growth. I just don't know why we're sitting here, and it's not about personalities, it's not about trying to pit school or communities against each other. But, doing this now with option 2, yes, it will be an answer for Cox Mill, very, very short-term. It really, to me, shifts that problem to Odell, so therefore, we've got another problem within the next year or so. I just don't understand why we're in the middle of this planning process for redistricting, why we're not making it really count while we can. I don't understand the reasoning for not doing that. That's not been put out to the community, and of course, they don't know this and it's not been advertised. But, I truly think, when you look at it, it's the better option to give everybody some room, move those communities together that are neighborhoods together. Let them all go at one time so that they build relationships for the next couple. Instead of coming back here and doing this again, and then we're going to move Winding Walk with that the next time, because we won't have a choice. That is going to be the next logical subdivision to go. That's just my thought. So, here's a couple of things, you know, I just, I want to ask you. I'm not really understanding why it needs to wait with middle school alignment. So, can you, I mean, what is the real reasoning for that? I mean, I get it time-wise why we would do it, but what difference does it make if we know that we're going to be doing what we're doing now versus two years from now?
So, you're making moves now that in two years you may undo, based on realigning middle schools and trying to align elementary schools to those middle schools based on the new boundaries. These boundaries will heavily be impacted by the new middle school boundaries. And so, the goal of anybody doing redistricting is to align your elementary to your middle to your high. And so, by moving these groups right now, you may end up having to move them again or not. And then, small groups of kids not getting to go to the next grade and/or level with the people they've been going to school with.
I guess that's what I don't understand, because this is against the county line. Cox Mill and Odell have to feed the way they do to middle school. It's not like we're going to go down and grab those areas when we build the new middle school, which is going to be out near J.M. Robinson. It'll back into Northwest Middle. But, this movement here would actually alleviate, send those kids that were sending the extra kids to Boger up to Northwest Middle, which would have given immediate release to Harris Road, which I would think that would be a huge benefit. I don't know why we would back into J.M. Robinson area there.
Yeah, that's pure speculation on anybody's part, because that's two years away. But, the idea when you realign is to align elementary to middle to high. And if you don't have to move kids now, and you can know that you're going to be doing that in two years, that's just the logical move.
But, you think that we're going to be moving kids from Cox Mill and Odell in the middle school alignment versus, I mean, differently than what we would be doing it right now, straightening out Northwest Middle and Harris Road?
I know that the middle school realignment will heavily impact that area. So, when that heavily impacts, then you can expect and try to align Cox Mill Elementary, Odell, Boger, all of those to their middle schools as much as possible.
And you don't think what we're doing, if we were looking at 5A or 5B, doing that shift to Northwest and Harris Road, you don't think that would be more beneficial?
You know, it'll be completely up to the board when they make that decision. And I've tried that for the last five years and I'm standing here tonight, so, there we go.
I hear you, okay, all right. So, let me see here. You know, I guess the whole Band-Aid, I just can't do that. It's really bothersome to me that we are sitting here as a board, knowing that we would have to do this again in a year or two and not make it really count. And with the communities that really do work together. I mean, Winding Walk and Skybrook, and I hate that things have gotten the way they have, but that will be the next one. That's, there's no other way. We wouldn't pick any other area to shift it if we need to. I mean, I would think. I would hope, because they're looking straight almost across at the school when you're out there, you know, so I would hope. But, anyway, that's just my thought. The transportation's been talked about, I drove it, you know, it's seven to eight miles. But, shifting up the northern part of Odell into Boger actually can take a different route. And I know this is probably more of an Art question, but if we actually diverted those kids off of Highway 73 in Poplar Tent and took them up and did the back road of 3 to Rankin to Drakestone, I mean, that actually pulls traffic congestion away from that area and not make it worse. So, when I drove that, that just seemed to be a more logical route to me, and it took less time to get to Boger than.
Well, as you heard, Mr. Art Whitaker got a major award tonight and is part of a national planning committee. And our transportation folks are probably one of the best in the state, if not the best in the state. And they have met with you guys and shared with you that they are very confident in their transportation routes and what they're planning on a daily basis. The planner in that area has been there for years and years and years. And so, we're very confident in what they shared with the board in their meetings, so.
Okay, all right, well, that, you know, that is just my thought. I just, I have a real issue with knowing that this is so very short-term. You know, we were told last year it was bad that we didn't do it then, and now we're here doing it again and not been much better. And that really bothers me. And that's why, you know, I sit and I've worked with it, I thought it was a great answer and a really good solution. I still think it is. I don't know that if we did either one of them, it's going to be the, oh, you know, answer to all. But, at the end of the day, you know, it just is what it is. I wasn't doing it to give anybody a hard time, I was doing it because I really felt like I'm going to be here in the next couple of years. There's some board members that are up for reelection that may or may not come back to us, and that's just a fact of life. You know, if they're not here, we're here to deal with fallout. And I just, I have a real hard time knowing that we will be back here to do this again. And I just would like to have the less impact if we could, okay.
Thoughts and comments from Ms. Grimsley?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Ms. Furtinbaugh?
I just wanted to go over, I guess, a little bit of history and kind of some things that I'm thinking. So, one of the kind of comments that was going around social media in the past week about is, that school board is redistricting again. And one thing I want to just kind of educate the public a little bit on is, even with this major redistricting, with adding an 800, 1,800-seat high school and an 800 or so-seat elementary?
Almost 1,000.
Almost 1,000. Even with those numbers and moving the children to fill those seats, we are still moving less than 13% of our district of about 34,000 kids. So, it's important to realize that even though it seems like there's all this movement back and forth, and whether we do option 2A or one of Mrs. Grimsley's options, we're not moving that many children when we look at it. I mean, every movement can be traumatic and nervous and whatnot. But, as Ms. Blackwell said so well last week, it's exciting, it's nervous, there's anxiety, but the kids do a whole lot better than we adults do. So, I think that's important to realize. The students and the areas we're discussing today were not in the movement of last year. So, it's not like we made one decision last year and moved them, and now we're moving them again. It was, this was area, Cox Mill Elementary was not included in last year's redistricting. So, that's why we have to talk about it now. Just as a side note, I heard speakers here and I had heard at a county commissioner meeting and different times about the Greenway plan. So, I did some research on the Greenway over the weekend, sent the board some links and stuff last night. And one thing that was notable to me is that the city's plan for the Greenway, and if you can kind of follow on the, you don't have to, not on the actual physical map, but follow my narrative here. Allen Mills is kind of sitting on the further east side of Cox Mill Elementary. The back of Allen Mills will connect to what the city expects to have a bit of a park and whatnot. There's wetlands behind the school and behind Allen Mills. It will come down, wrap through Highland Creek and connect to Winding Walk and whatnot. So, I thought it was interesting. Like I said, I had heard it at an Allen Mills community meeting a year or so ago. I had heard it from the county manager, actually, and then we heard it with our speakers again. So, I just was intrigued and kind of following that along, so I think that's important. I am for option 2A, one, to move Beach Bluff, which, because of the proximity to the school. And then, and by the way, the Greenway is actually going to go alongside Beach Bluff behind Cox Mill High School, because they have wetlands over there too. behind Cox Mill High School, because they have wetlands over there, too. That's where we get to buy property is where there's wetlands. And then it will actually cross Cox Mill Road and connect over to the Cox Mill Elementary side of the Greenway. So if anybody's interested, it's out on the city's, City of Concord's website. There's a Greenways link, and then there's the Hector Henry Trail, the Clark Creek Trail, and there's several ways they connect together. But anyways, it's interesting to see what the city foresees. And of course, they can only do parts of it every year because of funding. But when we start talking about the middle school redistricting, because Harris Road is so overcrowded, that's one of the main places we have to relieve, everything is going to start shifting. So when, in the redistricting last year, and option five is still up on that map, in the redistricting last year, we moved the part you can already see in green, not quite to the far northwest corner, but below, we came down and start moving those children to the Northwest Middle School. I do fear that if we come down any further, as shown in option five there, that we're going to get where some of those children can stay at Harris Road. They're not going to move to Boger. Boger would be a natural feed to Northwest Cabarrus Middle. I think we are going to end up moving those kids twice. So they could move now for elementary for fourth and fifth grade, and then we come along with a middle school, and heaven forbid the middle school gets delayed, they go to Northwest for a year, and then they come back and go back to Harris Road. I think there's too much possibility flip-flop in there, because that's the decision line, if you will. That's always going to be the decision line in the foreseeable future. So I would, I personally am in favor of option 2A, take out Beach Bluff, leave everything else in option two the same. I think we have enough room for that two-year. We don't move those families twice. And in this case, because this is an elementary movement now and a middle school later, if it was flipped, it wouldn't be the same children, but this would be the same children because of the two-year gap. So I would like to suggest, board members, that staff set a date when they want to start drawing maps. Maybe that's the beginning of 2021, so that we have plenty of time to look at and see where the growth is impacting for the middle schools, and see what else we have to move. And at that point, if we need to move additional middle, or elementary school, that we do so. But that would mean we would be making that decision in that second year of this elementary movement, which would ensure that we're only looking for two years right now. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, and we can have further discussion certainly, but I'd like to put the motion on the table that we approve option 2A for the Cox Mill Elementary School.
Can we at least get everyone else's opportunity to make a comment before we do that?
Well, I can put it on the table.
Is there a...
I mean, everybody, we can have discussion.
Is there a second?
If a motion was on the table, does it need a second yet?
Well, if she says a motion, it does need a second, but I was hopeful we'd have comments from everybody.
And then you can do all the discussion you want.
All right, so that's a 2A over 2. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct. 2A, which is the only difference of removing Planning Block 83, which is Beach Bluff.
Okay, so it's essentially option 2 less that one planning block, which is seven students.
Yes, so removal is acceptable. Mr. Shaw, correct? We can remove an area and not add an area.
So we're going to move to discussion. Ms. Carpenter, go. You have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the things on the discussion about, we were discussing, talking about 5 and 2, one of the things, if you look at option number 2, first of all, 2, I want to thank, first of all, all the emails we received from the parents. I want to thank each and every one of you for those. They were all read, and I do thank you.
Okay, so you're talking about option 2, is that right now?
Well, now, this is...
Which option are you talking about, so we can put it on the screen?
Well, looking at option 2 and 5, because first of all...
Well, let him know when to change the screen.
Okay, well, you can put, put option number, put option number 2 up there. Well, it's a combination, because I'm going to give you the numbers of 5B, too, but put 2 up there, and then I'll give you the numbers for 5B. But one of the concerns that I have is, when you look at what the numbers for 5, for 2, and you look at what the projections after the alignment, like the projections after 1,040, well, the capacity's 920. And then you go down the, after alignments, 812, capacity's 775. Well, you're not, and now you say, well, you've got mobiles. Well, you're automatically going to be putting those children in mobiles. Same way, 907, and capacity's 884, so you know you're going to automatically put children in mobiles. And so, that's not allowing for any, I mean, the growth, we know the growth's going to be in Odell, because we know just automatically, there was a subdivision approved out there for 200, 300 homes. I mean, that was just one. And I know they've got growth out there, and again, I have a real concern with after that alignment, 1,040. So we're not giving any, really, any kind of, for any other growth in there, and we know Allen Mills just by itself is going to do that. And then, bring up, bring up, well, bring up 5, just bring up 5, and you look at those You got 5 called? No, not, or did you have 5, or did you just have 5A?
5.
Yeah, and look at that. It give, and now, I didn't have, no, bring up the bottom part where it tells the, those numbers after alignment. I can't, there, wait a minute, bring it up where I can see it there. There you give, like, 803, where the capacity's 770. No, maybe it was 5. I take that back. 5B, 5B, 5B. See, 742 compared to 775, 873 compared to 884, and the only one that's really off is the 846, 830. You still, you have the mobiles. That's the only one that's really throwing you into the mobiles. And you're throwing in the mobiles, but at, you've got 1,001, and so you would be not as good as I'd like to see at Cox Mill, but it's, it's still, you could go back and do some adjusting on that compared to number 5, and get back down using number, using 5, and you could get that one lower. But again, I hate to see those capacities, because you know automatically you're going to go to those mobiles, and I don't want to see that. With the safety factor involved, that's what I hear a lot of times from families. They don't like to see the children in mobiles, and those mobiles cost us. Right now, at the primary, at the, at one of the schools, we don't have those mobiles put there yet. So we know that's going to cost us extra money to put those mobiles there. We don't have them there yet, so that's going to cost us to put those mobiles there. Yeah, we can put them there, and we've got space to put them there, but they're not there yet. And that's going to cost us money right there to put them there. And so, we're going to have the expense to put those, are those in the budget? Have we budgeted? Can someone answer me those questions? Have we budgeted for those mobiles yet?
You're asking me?
Anybody that can answer me the question?
So, Ms. Carpenter, there are four, currently four mobile units at primary, at Odell Primary, and because we are adding seats through West Cabarrus High School and Hickory Ridge Elementary School, we will have some empty mobile units if we need to utilize them.
But it costs to set them up. We have...
The moving and the setting of the foundation just does cost us money.
But how about the other one? I mean, we're going to have to, from these totals, we're going to have to put them there, too.
At Odell Primary?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we'd be right at capacity there, so we would need another mobile unit or two there initially, yes.
I mean, but that's not allowing for anything.
I previously asked Ms. Klutz the question about mobile unit movement in relation to the two new schools opening, and she said, yes, that money was accounted for in the request for mobile unit money for this fiscal year. So they've already, for the renovations and for the movement, they've already accounted for that money.
Well, why would they account for it if we haven't done anything?
Because when they were looking at the original redistricting, the first 3,900 to 4,000 students that we approved last year, that was when my question to her was about. And so, she said, yes, we have that money that will repurpose them.
Yeah, and I'll add that we do have a request for mobile, a longstanding request for mobiles every year to the county. Next year, although we haven't formally made that request yet, as you know, we're going through the process here on the committee, that we have a request for mobiles on that as well. And it's not as large as in years past, because we're adding so many seats. So hopefully, we get some relief from the request, but we still have a request for the, for the movement of mobile units.
But that's what I was wondering, because there would be a cost for that. But that really concerns me, because these numbers on number 2, option 2, it's right at the line on that, so we know we're going to have to put them in mobile units. We know for a fact that those children are going to have to go into mobile units. You're not allowing for any real growth in that area, so you're putting a Band-Aid on it, and you're fooling yourself, you people that are sitting out there. You're going to come see me, and you're going to be seeing me within a, less than two years. You're going to see me again, and some of you, the man sitting beside me, he's not going to have to worry about it, because he's not running again. And then there's a few of them that's up in the air, so, but he's not going to have to worry about it.
Oh, and I don't, I'm not concerned about anything.
Anyway, you're not going to have to worry about it, but the rest of you is going to be seeing me again. So they, they're going to do, they're not going, but this is not the solution, and they're going to, we can't answer questions, but they're going to, they're not going to have to worry about, but you're going to come back and you're going to be seeing me, and you will, you can, and I, and you will, you'll see me again, and that's what, we were trying to make you not have to come see me again, at least for a while. And so, that's what we were trying to do. I don't want to make a Band-Aid out of it. And there was a lady at our first meeting, our first prep of Karen, and she said it was a shell game, and I think she hit the nail on the head, that this number 2 option is a shell game, and I really believe it, and I was hoping that it wouldn't be. And I, my one big concern, and I stated it at the last thing, is that all the options were not put on the table to the public, and not all options were. And I still have that same problem, that all the options weren't put out there, and I think they should have been. Only one option, option 2, was put to the public where they could see it. Not all of them were, and I still have that same concern, and so that's why I don't think the public and everybody got to see everything that was out there, and I think that that is not right, that all options should have been put out there. And so, I don't think that the general public and everybody got the full options of everything, and I just don't feel like option 2 will give the relief, and that we will see this well before the realignment for the middle schools. So that's just the way I feel about it, and I think you're fooling yourself if you do accept that. And the thing with the park, with the parks coming online, most children, they love them, they will maybe walk with a family, but to let their children just go, very few families will do that, especially elementary. For high schools and things like that, they love that, but they're not going to let their kindergartner or their other ones say, go on to school, because they're afraid of it.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter, I wasn't suggesting that there would be a high volume of walkers. We don't even see a high volume of walkers in the neighborhoods that have children close by. The parents do want to make sure they get there. I'm thinking more of how the City of Concord is building what they see as a community, a connected community, and that we have that information to use.
Well, you made a comment about the bus riders, we wouldn't have to worry about. They could walk there, but I have seen it many times, and they won't let them, they won't let them walk, they will, you know. I mean, I even see it now, parents are still waiting at the bus stops in my neighborhood for the, they won't even do it for the bus stops.
Ms. Carpenter, anything else?
No.
Okay. There could have been thousands of options out there. The option number 5, 5A, and 5B were proposed by a board member last week. We did not have the time to have discussion to put that out to public, and that's what this meeting is for. So if 2A is not, or 2 or 2A is not an acceptable option, then we have other options to move forward with.
Well, I make a substantive motion. I'll make, I'll put 5 on as a, I'll make a motion to put 5 on as a option.
Are you going to amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion.
What's a substantive motion?
A substantive motion.
Can you help us there, Fran?
It'd be an amendment to the existing motion, and then you vote on it. You need a second on the amendment, and then you vote on the amendment.
We still have discussion to do. Can you hold off?
You would discuss that.
All right. Well, I don't want to, I would prefer to give everybody an opportunity.
If she gets a second, you got a lot of time.
I amend it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discuss the amendment.
Now, we're still changing the tune here. We'll discuss the amendment.
Well, you have to vote. Do we want to...
Discussion at this point before we vote on it.
I have nothing to say about the amendment.
Anybody else?
Call the question on the amendment, please.
Question has been called on the amendment.
Ask for it.
All in favor, raise your, raise your, I guess, right or left hand, right hand. Anybody opposed, raise your left hand. Okay, that motion fails. Okay, so we're back to discussion on the initial motion. Mr. Schumacher, it's your turn.
First off, Ms. Grimsley, thank you for all the hard work you've done. I know you have really plowed this, and you've done a really good job of trying to put those numbers together. I do think that your selection of option 5s and all are great if we weren't in the situation we're in, but I think they're premature because of other issues, and that is mainly the middle school. And is it possible to bring up the development map that Francis provided, excuse me, I can't remember Francis's last name?
We had like the screen to get it.
Would that be possible? Because I have, I need, it's very vital that I get that up there, so the audience understands what I'm going to talk about.
Can you talk, can you talk while I...
Yes. So what I looked at on the development map, which we not totally paid attention to, and that is what's sitting over here in the Boger area. Yeah, I've got it right here. In Boger, there are currently approved developments that have infrastructure in place and are being developed as we're talking right now. And those developments are going, going to yield another 331 students, or projected to yield that much. When you add the 331 to the 691 that we have in option 2A, that puts Boger at 1,022, and as we've noted from the option 2A, their capacity is only 970. So now, we have exceeded their capacity by 50-some students. They already have eight mobiles at Boger, so we would exceed the capacity not only for the students there, but for the mobiles that are there, and we'd have to either bring in more mobiles, and I don't know if that's feasible or not. Boger is a little bit different site than Cox Mill, but we haven't gone down the path to assess the mobile situation in Boger. But this is a real possibility, because I'm watching homes, as I drive down Kannaplis Parkway, and I happen to live right off of it, between Kells Water, Austin Corners, and there's one that Keith Wayne's group is developing right now. He's putting the infrastructure in right now for that particular development. All of those are going up very quickly, and they may capitalize on the current economic environment and be able to get some homes up. The, thank you. So if you look at the orange over on the Boger side, you'll see that the Boger side's on the right-hand side of the screen, and you'll see there's a large orange block in the middle, and then one slightly to the lower left side of the middle, and those are the three that I'm talking about. But if you look at those numbers there, that's what I'm, just added those numbers up, and so that's what we're facing in that area. So Boger could end up blowing up, just like what happened at Allen Mills and those areas, because those homes are going up rather quickly. The infrastructure's in place, the home, the curb and gutter's in place, and they've got the sewer, the water, and all the other gas infrastructure that they need to do all of those developments. And like I said, Austin Mills is not... that they need to do all of those developments. And like I said, Austin Mills is, not Austin Mills, yeah, Austin Corners is the one that is in number, it's got 56 in it, it's a little one down the bottom. Kellswater Bridge is the bigger one up at the top. Not only, Kellswater Bridge is single-family homes as well as apartments. And so that is a blossoming development and has been, and has been really falling into its own. So when we look at 331 potential students there, and then we look at carving out another 200 from Odell to put over there, we now potentially dwarf the capacity of Boger by a dramatic amount. I think, why I say that's premature, and I think you've done a lot of homework, I'm not, I'm not debating you, and I'm so glad you did this, because it really does point out the dynamics in the growth going on in this county. I've been talking about it for a long time. Right now, the option two keeps the students located at their middle schools. So we do move the students from Boger, that we're going to Odell, back to Boger up in the upper quadrant in option two. This was a proposal that we made last year. But when we didn't go with the Cox Mill redistricting, we decided not to exercise that because it was just, it was not, not in the best interest to even exercise anything over in that area and redistrict. But now we're here back again visiting it. Option two was the proposal that we had last year. It does take care of the middle school alignment. So the option two does align Northwest Middle and Boger together. Option two keeps Odell and Harris Road aligned as it should be aligned. And then when we build the new middle school, what's the population of that new middle school? Is that 1,300?
1,200.
1,200. So we will, we will be removing 1,200 students from different middle schools around the county, pulling them into this centralized middle school. That will create spaces around, and then we'll try to realign our different elementary schools. And that's gonna be another big task. But you need to keep those middle schools aligned, because one parent came forward and talked about keeping his children in the same school for 12 years. I don't know if we can ever guarantee everybody's gonna get their child in the same school for 12 years. That's, that's a great blessing to be able to do such, but I don't think at the rate we're growing that we're gonna be able to have that opportunity. I mean, Ms. Grimsley's in construction. She knows that every time we turn around, the city is approving another development. And they really don't, they don't look at the schools as an obstacle to putting in developments. And so we, we respond to how they provide. So my next point is, is that in this whole process, we still have to deal with the Mandarin program. And I think that that is, it was a great comment that was made about the Mandarin program. And we haven't really had much conversation, because we've really been trying to just get the statistics on this. The Mandarin program has to be addressed, and I will put out a motion in a minute, but not yet. But I think that there's a need for the opportunity for the parents to be able to stay involved with that school. And I think we already have that grandfathering in place for the people in the Mandarin program. Now, what we did have was the grandfathering for allowing them to carry their own students, children to the school. And that's the general way things are worked here now, is if, if you get redistricted and you're in a locked, in a program, we'll give you the opportunity to carry your students to school. I'd like to entertain another option, but I don't, and that doesn't have to be completely a part of this motion, but it may be something I ask staff to provide me. I need to have a little more information, how we deal with Mandarin. And that can be a separate issue that we talk about. The other thing that I noticed on the, on the development map was, when you look at the Odell area, you've, you've got to look at it, so if you look, can you slide the map over just a little bit there, Dane, Mr. Hughes? Move it to the left. Move it to the right, over towards the Odell area, please, the other way. Slide it. Yep, keep going. There you go. That's perfect. Now, if you notice, there are, there's a lot of green in there. There's only one active of development in place in, in Odell. And that one active development is scheduled for about eight more children, according to that map. The remainder of those developments have a tremendous number of children, so it is actually, but they're all green. That means they haven't broken ground. They've only been approved, no infrastructure's in place. It means someone's got to pay the money to put the infrastructure in place. We're coming up on a presidential election with Ms. Blackwell, quick, yeah, okay. Because I got confused with your name in the old days. But she appropriately pointed out. So maybe they will hold off doing their infrastructure until they see what, what happens and how the economy's gonna roll. They may or may not shake the dice and decide to get, get going on it. I don't know what developers think like. But those are green, they're not developed, and the ground hasn't been broken to put the infrastructure in place. And you need at least six to eight months to put infrastructure like that in place to at least begin like a phase one or phase two. So we're pretty well assured that it's gonna be at least two to three years before those greens begin to mature and bring us students. So the reason that I feel our option two right now is the appropriate option is because we have so many unknowns in the Odell area, even though we know it's gonna blow up. One of our things that we probably should consider on our strategic plan is, where are we gonna put another elementary school? Because if these things mature out, there's no, there's no schools that can handle all of this. And so, you know, we've talked about moving Northwest High School, and we've talked about, you know, we gotta, we're looking for property for that. We've got the possibility of taking that campus and moving the middle school to the old high school. And then we've got the possibility of even using the old middle school, Northwest Middle School as it is today, maybe using that for a bigger campus for elementary. But we have to really start thinking about, is that gonna be a viable solution? Because now we'd be moving kids so far, and so many, that the busing may be extraordinary amount of money. I mean, just to, just to bust a number of students from in the option five, five is $40,000 more than if you would just keep them at Odell. So we're gonna add additional $40,000 to the budget, and that's a premature expenditure for right now. And I think that that, we'd be well, well advised not to spend that kind of money at this point in time, but to wait and, and, and to the middle school gets built, and to maybe refine our, unfortunately, we might have to refine our strategic plan. And even though I'm not here, Ms. Carpenter, I am thinking about the future all the time, and I think about the data. So, you know, you don't have to worry. I am not a lame duck. I am here with you, and I just didn't feel like running again. But we, we really need to probably look at our strategic plan and maybe look at, look at these maps and see how the dice should fall for us, and where we should maybe relocate a new elementary school. And that's, yeah, a huge opportunity for us to think about there. So, yeah.
Right about there.
Yeah, right about there. Yeah, right on the lake.
Right about.
They won't let us build on the lake, Ms. Carpenter. We could have a lakefront school. So, all right. So I'm, I'm finished with right now, but I would like to revisit the Mandarin before we.
Okay, we'll do that before we finish.
Okay.
Mr. Harrison. All right, Ms. Blackwell.
I'm just gonna practice the art of saying, just very, very quick, thank you to, again, all of the neighborhoods for coming out and voicing your support, regardless to which way it is that you want us to go. Just know that we have all worked very hard. This is a very tough decision for everyone. And just another special shout out to Holly for all of your hard work, because I know that you have worked your booty off on option five.
Not much of it. I would like to just make one comment, because I do want people to understand that I did take a lot of that into consideration. You know, I, I worked, I did work a lot on it. But the deal is, my trade-off was, we might have a little bit more on transportation, but we definitely gonna have a lot more on mobiles, okay? And that number, we didn't have time to figure out what that is. But I have a feeling it's gonna exceed $40,000. So at the end of the day, my thought is, if we could have done something, even if five A, five B is not the complete answer, we know that two and/or two A is not. I wish we could find a happy medium. I know we're crunched for time. You know, it's been talked about kindergarten registrations driving this. I don't know why, since that's online. You know, I know the date is a big deal, but it's not like they attend the schools anymore. You know, maybe the affected schools could have waited just a little bit to do that. And I know it's a lot more to do it. And since I am in construction, and I can tell you, I promise you, I know exactly how this goes, they're not gonna delay, they're gonna accelerate, is what they're gonna do. Because that is the not knowing what's gonna take care of a presidential election year. It doesn't go the other way. So, you know, with that being said, I get it that y'all support it, and that's fine. You know, I know that we all have best interests of all these communities at heart. I would love for us to see, to have had some type of happy medium between all of them. But if that's not to be, we'll be back here in two years.
Bless.
Mr. Harrison, that's your opportunity.
Well, I'm so very grateful that some people are more concerned about my reelection than I am. And I'd be delighted to take a few contributions from those individuals who were so inclined. I'll make just two observations very quickly. I spend way too much time on the internet. And so I stumbled across the Cox Mill Elementary School Daughter's Choice Candy Land Ball Dance announcement, which you'll have this weekend. And thank you for everybody, everybody, everybody who had anything to do with that, because it's yeoman's work to orchestrate that kind of thing. But it noted, it says, please note, due to our growing school size and space constraints, this event will need to be capped. It's like, the, the parents of the school themselves are recognizing the limitations of space, or whatever was driving that decision. And I'm not aware of what the, you know, final outcome was. I hope no one had be turned away. But the fact of the matter is that the, the parent base of the school itself was aware of the limitations of space for that event, much less other events at the school. And, and kudos and thanks to the school administration for possibly communicating that, or helping direct parents to understand that there had to be some kind of limitation about the number of parents, number of kids and their parents who came to that event. So the other observation is basically just this. I'm afraid, and I do support option two A, but I'm afraid that attempting to be too visionary now with some of these other options may cause us to have to undo in the near future what we did not have a clear and compelling reason to do today. And we can manage future decisions better if we don't have to undo them, or that we're done wrong, or not with all the information that we need today, because all that information is gonna change with growth that we cannot predict, project, or predict. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call the, well, maybe not call the question. You have your comments.
I get my opportunity as well. And I want to go back to that development map as well. So I don't know if it's Lynn, or Francis, or Brian. Help me again understand how we came up with the annual growth for next year of 67 students at Cox Mill. When you have a growth, you have a growth map over here that you show that shows, it actually has projections per, what is it, projections per development? Is that correct? And what, I think the comment was, what is the ratio for that, for those developments? That was an average, but the, we already know that the Cox Mill exceeds that average. Why would we not use that newer average for the Cox Mill area? And basically, how did we come up with the 47?
Okay, so I'm not sure what, are you looking at this map?
I'm looking at that, that map, that map is projection of development in the Cox Mill area, if you move it down some, right? So we have acted, we have acted, keep going down.
Yeah, but I don't know what, I mean.
Okay, somewhere you, you.
So I can tell you, if you'll slide it back over where you see the red, to the right, back to the right, right there. You see those red areas? We do use Cox Mill's area and their yield factor to project their growth. So I'm not sure exactly what number you're speaking to specifically.
So those don't line up with, that what you just said?
Yeah, right. They don't, because you don't add them on, Ms. wants you don't add them on top of what you already have. You do grade progression or a grade progression ratio, and then you add the growth to that. You don't take the numbers of kids that are sitting there right now and leave them sitting there, and then add all the kids on top. You have to do a grade progression. Kindergarten goes to first, first goes to second, and then you do that over a trend of three to five years, sometimes one year. Cox Mill, we usually use one year right now, because their yield factor is so much. So we are currently using the correct yields for Cox Mill Elementary to produce those numbers. And then we do a projection, not based on what's sitting there now and throwing that number on top, but on a grade progression ratio and grade progression units. Does that make sense?
There's a, there's a method there, yes.
Yes, there's that, a mathematical method. It's not just a shot in the dark.
The number that we're saying is, the growth in Cox Mill was over 100 last year. Is that correct?
I don't have that number.
Okay, well, what was presented to us was over 100. The, the projection here that we're using all these numbers and all these projections is 67.
Yeah, if, if I just.
I want to understand why it's 67 and not 100 and so.
Well, if you, one, think there was a anomaly of growth, not only in one student per two households, but instead of one per three, which was the average. But we also had those Skybrook Apartments come online, that there were like 90 students in the planning blocks that are Skybrook. That was a huge portion of it.
So are we thinking, since that's full, that's why this number is less? I mean, I just.
No, we go back to, again, and I'll let Ms. Lane explain a little bit. But what I'm trying to say to you is that we, we don't add what we, just because we had 100 last year doesn't mean we're gonna have 100 this year. What we do is mathematically, look at the kids that are currently sitting at Cox Mill. We do a grade progression ratio, which means over three-year period, if you were in kindergarten, how many of them showed up in first grade? How many of them showed up in second grade? And you get a number for every grade. And then you take the growth and the yield factor for each one of those developments, and then you're able to add that to that number. So based on what the growth is in that area, and how many different developments you have, that will be the number. So Ms. Furtinball's point of the Skybrook Apartments, that is built out right now. Allen Mills is not, and that's why you see the big red there. And how many kids will come exactly from that? I mean, all of that is detailed. It's not just because we had 100 last year, we're gonna have 100 this year. So.
But you can show us the formula of how you got to the 67. Is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
So 67, we're all coming, I just want to make sure that we are comfortable with the 67, because as Ms. Grimsley said.
So, yeah, just one example.
Bring up the option one, two A, or any one of the options.
The additional growth at Cox Mill is what you're talking about?
Yes.
The additional 67 kids taking it up to 1227?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, like Ms. Reimer said, that is a projected growth. So you're seeing growth numbers on the development map that shows around 100 kids, right, for those developments that come in. We have to use our average yields, and, and we know those yields are even more in Cox Mill, which is what we've advised to you, that even though we're using those, those average yields across the district, we expect that yield to be even more. This is a projected number. If all those developments come online in that Cox Mill area, we're gonna be, we're gonna be above 67. We may be above 67 in that particular.
And that's what her concern was, and that was what, what our concern is.
We would still be 100 kids less than what we have sitting in that school right now.
Right. What the chart, what the chart, what the chart shows us, we have 113 spaces below the 1160 that we're at now that we're saying is capacity. And if that class size changes one more time, does that 1160 go down further the second year? Or is that, are we good with 1160?
Yes, we are. We can send you the yield factors for first year and second year using the current yield.
I'm talking capacity, capacity.
The capacity doesn't change.
So even with the law, the class size law, we don't have another year?
After next year, we're good.
So we're, so we're okay with the 1160?
Oh, that's been factored in, yes.
So what we're saying here is, we have two years before we redistrict again. We have 113 seats before we get back to where we're at. Are we gonna?
So you, you can't look at it that way, because it, it does, the same number of kids sitting there right now, we're gonna move a large fifth grade class out and bring a smaller kindergarten class in. So you may have 140 seats to start with, and then you add the growth on top of that. Or you may have 160 seats, you don't know, you have to project. So if you look at your very large fifth grade classes, which we have at Cox Mill, and smaller kindergarten classes, if you remember the charts I showed you guys in those two-by-twos, what happens from kindergarten to fifth grade? They grow every year. Every cohort's growing. So we start out in one year with a large fifth grade class and a smaller kindergarten class, so we actually have more seats than 130. The other point I'd like to make is, just because that development says 67 kids, 67 kids are gonna show up at Cox Mill Elementary August 25th. It may be 10 of them show up by August 25th. It may be 20 of them show up next year, and 20 of them show up the next year. So you can't add 67 on top of what's currently there and say we're at capacity, if that makes sense.
And that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to go, is that 67, if it's 67 this year and 67 next year, you've exceeded the, what we've moved out of there, is what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Walter, I just want to give you something else to think about. So every time we move neighborhoods out of a school district, we move the opportunity for their growth.
for their growth out of that district, too. So when we saw the big numbers for Skybrook that came in this school year, by moving those areas over to Odell, that growth potential, if there is any more, goes to Odell, too, it doesn't stay there. So you're not duplicating the growth within the Cox Mill District.
Okay, so you're giving yourself more leeway.
Right, you're giving yourself more leeway, because now you're pushing the opportunity for growth across the road.
And what I don't want to see happen is exceeding the 1160 again next year, that's really the point. So 2A.
We fully agree with you.
We're comfortable, it will give us two years before we deal with this again.
Yes, I told Mr. Schultz, he's fully responsible for that. I'm just kidding, yes, we are, we are, we are very, yes, we are comfortable that in two years.
If we're not, then we need to be doing.
Yes, we are, we are sure.
And I guess the second comment that was brought up, that green area around Odell, is that expected to start soon, or is that still going to be green for a while? We don't know.
I'll use an example, let's use Allen Mills as an example. Allen Mills was first in green, as you would say, right there in 2008, and we saw the growth from Allen Mills win last year. So, this is a development that is currently green, and it could start coming on next year, or it may be 10 years, we don't know. What is the presidential election going to do, what is construction going to do, you don't know, but right now, it's anyone's guess.
Well, the concern, the concern is, if that takes off there, there won't have any room to move additional students from Cox Mill into the Odell area, and similar to what was mentioned by some of my colleagues here, that there's a tremendous amount of potential students in that area. There is not a potential, we don't have anywhere close to the amount of available seats to handle all that growth.
Not if they all showed up at one time, but they're not.
Well, even if they all show up within the next six years, it's still, we're not building any schools over there in the next six years.
You still have a large group of kids that are exiting elementary, if you remember that, Ms. Carpenter spoke about that a lot, and McKibben spoke about that, we will eventually see a leveling in our elementary, and possibly a decline. We have very large classes right now in the schools.
Yeah, if everything's built out, that's what he explained, but you keep adding new development to that, that calculation. Okay, that's kind of what I wanted to cover, is make sure that we have that, that we're comfortable with the numbers. And again, thank you for all the work that went into this, I mean, we've been spending all kinds of hours on it, we've been sending you guys questions, hearing from the public, and passing this stuff, that along as well, and making sure everybody has an opportunity to share their thoughts and their opinions, to help us make a better decision, so. With that, I guess we had a motion, and we had a second, did we have any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on option 2A, is that correct? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have a 5 to 2 vote on option 2A.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. I just want to make sure that this is within the guidelines, and I'd like to ask our attorney, since we did not have a public hearing on 2A. Mr. Attorney? We only had a public hearing, and the only thing that was advertised was 2.
There's no legal requirement to have a public hearing on a redistricting, so it depends on what your board policy says.
What does that?
I'd have, if we could pull that up, but generally, the concept that each time you might make a modification to something that's talked about at a public hearing would not generate a new public hearing.
We're not adding any people to the, that are affected, if we were changing it and adding like a 5, we'd have several folks that would be impacted that weren't prior to that.
If you wanted to look at the policy, we could look at the policy that's pulled up, but the general concept is that you don't have to have successive public hearings with each possible permutation or modification.
And Mr. Shaw, I think what Ms. Carpenter is maybe concerned about is, for simplicity's sake, we call the removal of Beach Bluff on a new map, 2A. We had a public hearing on option 2, we removed one neighborhood that was included, we had speakers last week and this week representing that neighborhood, so removing a neighborhood, you can call it option 2, removing the planning block for Beach Bluff, instead of calling it 2A, and we did have a public hearing for that.
We had a public, and what was advertising in the paper was 2, it was not 2A, and it specified.
It was labeled like that as a map.
It specified certain blocks, is what it specified in the paper.
I think we did the same thing last year when we decided not to move the Cox Mill students.
Exactly.
And they were part of the public hearing.
Same situation last year, Skybrook was included, and the board, majority of the board voted to not include them, we didn't have a new public hearing for that, same scenario.
All right, so before we go to closed session, Mr. Schumaker wanted to discuss the Mandarin program.
Right now, I think we have to review the Mandarin program and the guidelines therein, so, Dr. Lauter, could you kind of tell us what the past practices have been with, in regards to already seated programs and children seated in those seats?
Right, so when, obviously, we have lots of choice programs across the district now, and what was kind of brought up earlier was providing transportation for those students, if you were to provide transportation for one group of students, then you would, you would be picking out one group of students to do that for, and no one else that's affected by this redistricting, as Ms. Furtinbaugh said, at least 4,000 students, so if they've been moved from somewhere else, the district, the board has usually said that they have to provide their own transportation. If you then say, well, we're going to provide transportation to one choice program for 50 students, 100 students, then 3,900 students would not have that option. So, it's certainly something that we can look at, we can look at from, you know, transportation and provide to the board, but I would caution the board on treating one set of students or one neighborhood differently than the rest of the students that have been redistricting, because it would be a precedent, district-wide, to certainly think about before you made that decision.
Dr. Lauter, I have a quick question regarding that as well. So, with this school being so close to capacity now, and probably will exceed next year, how do we, how do we deal with the Mandarin program as far as it being a school choice? How does that affect other kids being able to be offered that program, if you will?
Ms. Reimer, move quickly, so I'll defer to her.
I am. So, because of the overcrowding, the Mandarin program now serves only students in the program, are actually in the district for Cox Mill, starting this school year. So, students that are outside of that district are not allowed for program choice until we have further notice that there's an available seat. So anyone taking seats this time in program choice will be students that live in the Cox Mill area, so it won't bring other kids out. Until we find out that maybe in a Mandarin first grade class or kindergarten, we have 19, and we can have 21, and there's no one else in Cox Mill's zone that wants that seat, then you could allow two kids from outside to come in, only because you already have that classroom established, so that would be it, so.
One of the things, right now, the enrollment for that has been closed, so wouldn't we have to reopen it up so those people could apply?
Sorry.
Get my exercise. So, we will reopen for kindergarten registration in the Mandarin program in April, so it has been open for anyone that's within Cox Mill's area to ask to come into the program as a kindergarten, and we will reopen that again in April with what we announced tonight with kindergarten registration, and if there's any available seats after that, in any classroom that's already established, then we would look at a possible lottery there, but we're not sure that there'll be any available seats.
I think, was your, was your question, the people that are being redistricted out, do they have to apply to be in?
No, well, wait, that will be a board decision, because they've been redistricted. I would say that staff have, and all the numbers you have seen, have included all those kids in the Mandarin program remaining at Cox Mill, so the numbers you see are the students remaining there.
So, Mr. Schumaker, would you like to make a motion that confirms that?
I just want to clarify one thing, though, but that, but the ones that are going out would have to provide their own transportation.
That would be the recommendation of staff, yes, ma'am.
And that would be consistent with every other magnet program or choice program that we have in Cabarrus County at high school, elementary, or middle. If you made a choice with redistricting, and you want to go back as part of that program, then you provide your own transportation, so that would be, again, consistent across the district.
All right, so I would like to make a motion that we continue to grandfather the students that are in the Mandarin program, starting with the ones that are currently sitting, kindergartners, moving up through the fourth grade, correct, and that they would be grandfathered in regardless of whether they're in the Cox Mill District or in the Odell District. And I don't know if there's others from other districts, but anybody who's in the current Mandarin program would be grandfathered in, so I don't want to restrict it to any, but any, any child that's in it should stay in the program. And then, I would like to include in the motion is that we would assess the kindergarten enrollment this spring, and then if it's optional, if it's available, open up whatever remaining seats may be available for that program, so that's my motion.
Does that cover it? If so, a second.
If somebody wants to second it, I just, I have a question, clarification.
Hold on, we have a second by David Harrison. Okay, we do have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Okay, I have a question, is, so that, doing this would be consistent with other magnet programs? I just want to make sure we're consistent, that we're not undoing anything, or have additional obligations to the other 3,900, 4,000 kids, so, okay.
Ms. Grimsley?
My thought was, do we need to include the verbiage in that motion, that they have to provide their own transportation?
Yes, I would think so.
So, somebody needs to amend the motion, or you want?
I will, I will add that to my motion, Mr. Harrison, if you'd second it.
Okay, so we still have a motion by Mr. Schumaker and a second by Mr. Harrison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. That motion passes 7-0, and then I will need, to go into closed session, we do have a need for a closed session today, let me find the item on the agenda. So it says, I need a motion to convene in closed session to consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
I would suggest adding student matters.
And what, what reference is that?
Under 143-318.11A1.
A1, so, 143-318-11A1, 11A3, and 11A6. Can somebody make that motion?
Somebody second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Grimsley, a second by Ms. Furtinbaugh, all in favor of moving into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you for your participation.